Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start the meeting. This is City Council Regular Meeting, November 24th, 2020. The time is 7:06 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please take roll call?
Yes, I'd just like to remind the council members to state the city that they're located in as well as the state. Dave Abdullah?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Bill Bazzi?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Robert Coniston?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Denise Malinowski, Mexico?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Ray Muscat?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Tom Wenzel?
Here, I am in Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
At this time, I'd like to have Councilman Wenzel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we approve the Agenda in order of business, November 24th, 2020, electronically-held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, virtual meeting, as outlined in Item 3.
Support.
Urged by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Approval of Minutes. This is the minutes from the electronically-held meeting on November 10th, 2020.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
I move the minutes from the electronically-held regular council meeting of November 10th, 2020, as set forth in Item 4A, be approved.
Support.
Urged by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Public Hearing and Comment on Agenda Items. I ask that you limit it to two minutes and state your name. Go ahead, please. At this time, I don't see anybody wanting to comment. Let's move on. Next, we have Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair, you had one person raise their
Council Chair, you have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just seen this. My internet's going in and out. I'm sorry. Mr. Blackburn, go ahead, please.
He should be good to go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, this is about Item 11B. I'm trying to understand what the resolutions for and why that much money? That is more money than what a treasurer or the mayor makes in a month. And was there a budget amendment for this? I would like some more clarification, please.
I'm sorry, we're not able to respond during public hearing and comment on agenda items.
That's fine, but at the time, I'd like to hear some some backup, please.
Any further comment on agenda items? Mr. Hassan, let me unmute you. I didn't see that. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Hassan Shami. I'm the owner of the Terry Melt, a restaurant in Dearborn Heights. Want to speak regarding 11A Outdoor Patio Seating. I just want to let you guys know that the temporary permit that I was granted this past summer saved my business, also saved the businesses in the area as well. Outdoor patio is much needed during this COVID pandemic. And also, I do, I am a pharmacist as well, and I have a pharmacy in the city. And I also want to mention that with the vaccine coming out, there's still going to be restrictions on how we operate. I was hoping you guys can extend the patio seating for the future for permanent
Wait, Lynn, I think we hear you too, just FYI. Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Hassan, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if you guys heard me or not.
No.
Yeah, we did.
Just to briefly reiterate what I said, I'm an owner of a restaurant in Dearborn Heights. The temporary permit that I was granted for patio seating saved my business during this pandemic. If it was, if I didn't have the patio, we probably would have closed down our business. So I want to thank the city for allowing this to go through, and I'm hoping that you guys can extend this for permanent seating, because although the vaccine is coming out, as a pharmacist, I also know that this pandemic will stay. There will be restrictions in the future, and there's going to be many people who are still worried to sit inside of restaurants and small spaces. So I'm hoping that you guys can approve and extend the permits for patio seating.
Thank you. Any further public comment at this time? Let's move on.
Don't over here, don't hotpass one.
Oh, wait, where is he? Can somebody unmute him?
Good evening again. I have written a letter to the chairperson of the City Council, the controller, and I believe the clerk and the mayor, asking when I was treasurer, for Mr. Riley, John Riley, to help me six hours a week at $35 an hour. And if you decide to approve 11B, I am willing to do the same thing, even I am willing to help Lisa for free. I put one month of my time before I was appointed to be trained. I'm willing to put as much time for her free of charge to the city just to help her get into the position and to succeed. So I'm not there for the money. Actually, I lost lots of money being a treasurer from my business, and lots of people know that. So whatever you decide, I am willing to do this for free even, not for the money, and just for those people who wonder. I used my car, my gas, for five months. I never submitted mileage to the city. So just, I hope you recognize that. Thank you.
Next, we have Treasurer Hicks.
Hello, thank you, Madam Chair and Council. I would like to also speak on 11B briefly. That particular account that we're talking about, where that's a revenue account. So yes, there would have to be a budget amendment to the treasurer's office through part-time. You know, if it's what we're looking at, the council, I do appreciate your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Abdal Hawk, for your support, as well as Mr. Riley. You both have been phenomenal along with the staff here, getting acquainted. There's not a manual on, you know, getting transitioned, but we're working through everything, and I appreciate everyone's help with that. I did check with our deputy treasurer, because we were concerned about time off and the holidays, but it does look like that she will, after this week, will be here without time off until next spring. So we're good with that. But again, I think it is good to have some advisement, as it is a transition, and I do appreciate that. I do want, I wanted to add that I think the $35 an hour is fair, because it's what we, as a council or as a municipality, pays John Riley, as well as former clerk Walt Pershevitz, I believe. And that was in a consultant capacity during the transition, as we've seen a lot of changes with our cities here. So that is all I wanted to say. All right, thank you.
At this time, we will move on. Next, we have consideration, I'm sorry, next we have Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move council approve Item 6, 1 through 640, as outlined.
Support.
Urged by Councilman Bazzi. Is there any discussion? At this time, I see Mrs. Lazlo has her hand up. Is there any discussion in regards to this item?
That's for City Council people, yeah.
Yeah, well, okay. At this time, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Consideration of Bids. This is Fire Chief Brogan, bid award for EMS jackets and boots.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
Okay, I move that we concur with our Fire Chief David Brogan, who's requesting permission to accept bid for the Phoenix Safety Outfitters jackets and boots. And the bid came in at $31,331.25. This will be paid for through Medicare's funding from CDBG payable upon receipt. And he's also requesting the all-bid deposits be returned to unsuccessful bidders. And this is as outlined in Item 7B, I'm sorry, 7A.
Support.
Denise, you got it. We froze, you froze up on it.
Council Chair?
Support?
Support.
Okay. Support by Councilman Bazzi. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Bazzi?
I have a question. So in the bid sheet, okay, I have two questions. One, it says US Patriot Tactical. Okay, that was disqualified. Why were they disqualified? I guess that's my first question. I think that the chief is muted.
Let me unmute him.
You know, I know they didn't include a bid deposit. I'm not sure if that was, when they evaluated, I think that that was something that was required, that, oops. And that's what caused them to be disqualified.
Okay, this, so when you mentioned, when it's mentioned in the, in the bid, the bid sheet, it says that, I mean, I realize, you know, you want the top, the best equipment, obviously. But so you're comparing Phoenix versus Ali Company, right, not US Patriot, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers, bid award for Justice Center HVAC Service Maintenance Agreement.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move City Council concur with Chief Myers on approving the maintenance agreement with Johnson Control, as outlined in 7B.
Support.
Urged by Councilman Bazzi. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Bazzi?
Yeah, I just want to thank Chief Myers. I had, I had a few questions, but he was able to answer the questions. He sent me the bids that I requested. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers' request for bids for commercial ultraviolet sea lights.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with our Police Chief Mark Myers, who is requesting bids to go out for the following equipment by specification, commercial ultraviolet sea lights. And these lights are to be installed in each of the five rooftop HVAC units at the Justice Center. It'll be funded by CDBG grants and is considered for personal protection equipment, and will be paid by the grant funding. And this is as outlined in Item 7C.
Support.
Urged by Councilman Bazzi. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, from reports from Mayor, we have a veto of motion related to resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council to direct the city treasurer to establish separate bank accounts for the city restricted and assigned corporate funds. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to read our charter.
Section 7.13, veto by Mayor. The mayor shall have the power of the veto of resolutions and ordinances passed by the council, provided that the said veto, with the mayor's reasons in writing, must be filed with the city clerk at least 24 hours before the date of the next regular meeting of the council, at which said meeting, the clerk shall present such veto or vetoes to the council. The council may only at said meeting reconsider the vote at which such proceedings were passed and adopted. And if it so elects, may only at said meeting re-adopt such proceedings by a 5/7ths vote of all the members elected, in which event the veto shall be overridden, and it will bar the right of the mayor from any future vetoes of the proposed legislation. Such proceeding shall then become effective on the
This time, I'd like to reintroduce for possible, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Almost done. Following day succeeding such meeting of the council and ordinances so passed shall become effective immediately thereafter upon publication.
Thank you. All right, no problem. When you hesitate, I thought you were at the end. At this time, I'd like to reintroduce for possible reconsideration of Approved Motion 20-388, Resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council to Direct the City Treasurer to Establish Separate Bank Accounts for the City Restricted and Assigned Corporate Funds.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Bazzi, you support it? Do I hear a second?
I support. Motion.
We need a motion and a second.
Okay.
Councilman Bazzi, motion's it. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
You know, we went through this with Martin, and I'd like to know if we could ask the mayor, what did he do before he had the $2 million sitting there to make ends meet? Do we, do we not have enough money? And by passing, if we overturn the mayor's veto, that doesn't mean we're going to move the money. It's just going to give the ability to the treasurer to move the money, as far as I know. And if I, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that's $2 million, and it seems like, you know, we're always told it's four, five, six million dollars in our, in our account. I mean, if we take $2 million away, we're not going to make ends meet. So obviously, we don't have the money.
Let me, let me address that.
Please.
To your first point, this resolution directed in the determine on page 2, it says that the city treasurer's deposit, the $2 million, assigned to the general government retirees' healthcare in the City General Fund 115 Trust Fund Bank Account, as approved by City Council. So it would automatically, if you, if my veto is not upheld, it will automatically transfer the $2 million. I think as the discussion came about, I think you don't want to make that transfer, but rather talk to the auditors, talk to John Riley, let's talk about a smaller amount. What we had to do is, when you looked at the fund balance and how low it was, that if you, you would remember this, because you've been on the council for a while. But John Riley would come to the council in February and March and say, "We need to set up loan arrangements with the water and sewer fund with the library, because I'm going to run out of cash as a treasurer." And so that's how we funded the shortfall. We finally got to a point where we have a cushion of cash that this year, we did not need to do a borrowing. However, we came very close. If you recall, John Riley indicated that if we did not get that money from the Wayne County, then we would have had to borrow money. So he set up the arrangement for the borrowing. And that cost the general fund money. So I'm trying, what we're trying to do, and that's why John Riley got up at the last meeting and was pointing out that this is not fiscally sound. Give yourself, give ourselves the flexibility. Anytime during the year, if you want to relook at this in six months and say, here's our balance, an amount can get transferred. But I would, I would say that if this resolution that was approved at the last meeting is, and my veto is not upheld, you've lost the $2 million. I would say the treasurer has got to transfer the $2 million, because that's what was in the resolution. It takes that flexibility away, forces us probably to borrow money in the spring, and that's what I'm concerned about.
But Council Chair, as I'm reading this, it just says the city treasures to establish separate bank accounts for city restricted and assigned corporate funds. It doesn't say anything about they're going to move them, as far as I know.
Look at page 2, look, the, the resolves don't mean anything. Look at page 2, the determine. Although I would use a different term, but that is, normally in a resolution, it would say, be it resolved, be it resolved, be it further resolved. And, and look at item number 3. It, it, the council instructs the treasurer to deposit the $2 million into the 115 Trust Fund Bank Account. So if you, you approved this motion, if I hadn't vetoed it, the $2 million would have gone automatically into public trust. I'm trying to give us the flexibility, Councilman.
And I understand that, but you know, I put myself in a position of, of the employees who count on having healthcare 20, 20 years from now. And if it was me, I wouldn't like somebody playing with the money that's set aside for my healthcare. That's my main concern.
Well, let me, let me indicate to you that we have, the state required us to come up with a plan to do these, the healthcare legacy costs. We submitted the plan last year, and it was approved by the state, and we're going to make those payments. What you really have is an extra reserve to make sure that we have money available to make that payment. Let's say next year, I mean, we still have COVID, the economy, most of the restaurants are only on carryout. There's, there's a lot of concern about what will be next year's funding level for the city. This, having this money here means that we could make the next couple of years' payments and not have a difficulty meeting our obligation on the legacy cost. And we're, we're in fine situation, but to, to just make this transfer, in my opinion, is irresponsible. And that's why you heard it from John Riley, you heard it from Martin of Plant Moran, and you're hearing it from me. You've got, the financial people in this community are telling you that it's not a financially reasonable thing to do to pass this resolution, and that's why I vetoed it.
One more thing, Council Chair. Now that we're, we're short one council person, how does the vote still work?
You need five votes.
Even with one missing?
Correct.
That's that, Councilman Abdullah, Councilman Bazzi, and then Councilman Coniston, next.
So just quickly, just wanted to reiterate some of these items the mayor mentioned. But my concern with this, just like it was last time, and I know we had a study session with Plant Moran just before this, that was open to the public somewhere on there. But again, Martin from Plant Moran mentioned that this would not be a good thing for us as a city to do. There's no major advantage to doing this. The only disadvantage we have is that we wouldn't have access, access to this money. And also, obviously, the administration couldn't just take out this $2 million and go use it for something without our approval anyways. In addition to that, you got, you know, our treasurer, our former treasurer, John Riley, who's very experienced as a treasurer, highly recommended that we not pass this again. And again, of course, you got the mayor saying this too. I don't see, or have not been told, or been shown, an advantage to doing this, other than the fact that, I'm just going to talk about the elephant in the room, the lack of trust, and that's why they want to keep it in a separate account. Other than that, I've seen nothing that can convince me that this is what we need to do. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, and one last thing, obviously, the bond rating, you know, if we have that much less liquid money, that's going to lower our bond rating, which is not a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, we have Councilman Bazzi.
Okay, so I had, I had the same concern as Councilman Muscat, so I want to echo some of what he mentioned also. So what the city clerk, Sinia, mentioned, it's five out of seven, but now we have six. So obviously, we're not following the charter. So I don't, I don't know how that's going to work. So the charter says five out of seven, so we have six. Okay, that's one question. So I don't know if city clerk can answer that question before I go to the next question.
The charter says five, Councilman Bazzi.
Oh, it doesn't say five out of seven?
Yes, it does, but I have to agree with the mayor.
Okay. So again, you know, with what was discussed before, you know, I know it was mentioned, if we, if we look at the audit report, that it mentions that there's funds moving between funds, and it hasn't been approved by the city council, obviously. That's why we have findings with funds moving. So I mean, I'm up for this, for this resolution because of that, is because there's, obviously, there's some instances that we, the council have not approved funds being moved. And that's why we need to separate that money, so make sure that the general, I mean, employees can have that money, as mentioned by Councilman Muscat.
Martin had a comment on that?
Yes, thank you so much. I did want to clarify that there's no finding for moving funds, like cash, between different funds and improperly, you know, against the budget or anything like that. It was more of the allocations of how much certain funds are getting charged for certain expenses, that there should be a more accurate calculation, that should be an updated calculation from years past. So I just want to make sure that it wasn't construed that the city is using funds inappropriately for purposes that wasn't meant to be, or anything like that.
If I, if I might make one comment also, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Oh, the point I wanted to make is, the administration, I, as the chief administrator, have no access to the funds. Only the treasurer can move the funds from one account to the other. I cannot move any cash at all, period. What's happening?
I don't know.
I think his screen is frozen up. Might be his internet connection.
Who, mine?
Yes, there you are. Okay, we lost, everybody's
I was done, and I, I just, the point I wanted to make is, I don't have the ability to move funds at all. I have no cash responsibility. That's the treasurer's job. Only the treasurer can move the money, not me.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Four points quickly. Number one, I reiterate my comments about keeping the, the business, the entity, the city, operating and, and having sufficient cash on hand, and, and that being of utmost importance. If you, everyone will remember, just prior to John Riley's last day, he made a request at the council's suggestion to do some inter-fund borrowing, and that request was turned down by the council. The council thought that was not fiscally sound or needed. Also, I understand that some money has already been moved and already been deposited in a separate account, a little less than a million dollars. Does, does the mayor or the treasurer or anybody, or was that a separate issue?
Well, if, if, I don't know if I'm
You're unmuted.
I'm unmuted. We, we had set up the plan in our plan with the state of Michigan, and we did make our contribution into the trust as was required, and we will meet the obligations of the commitment that the city made, the mayor and the council, we both had to sign off on it, to the state of Michigan for that legacy cost for OPEC. So money has already been transferred. The exact amount, I don't know off the top of my head.
And lastly, the money's been allocated, it just hasn't been placed into the fund. It's, we've, the city's got a big checking account to balance and a big checkbook to balance, and it's, it's, our, our long-serving treasurer, John Riley, felt fit that we were, we were doing things properly. The money is separate and allocated, but if the city has a drop in their bond rating, has bad cash flow problems, I think that's more damaging and dangerous than taking two million dollars and setting this, setting it aside in perpetuity.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Muscat, please.
I think my questions all have been answered.
At this time, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is for, what is this? What are we voting on?
On nine A.
Okay, this is for the reintroduce the possible
She's breaking up, and I can't.
Establish separate bank accounts for the city restricted and assigned corporate funds.
Okay.
Favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion failed.
We will have to take a roll call vote.
Wait, Madam Chair, if I can interrupt for just two seconds?
Yes.
Just for clarification, because Councilman mentioned was nine B. I want to make sure it's just for clarification. We're voting on nine A, correct?
Nine A.
Nine A, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. Are we voting on nine A or the mayor's veto?
Nine A is the mayor's veto.
Yeah, but we need to receive his veto first, I think.
No.
No, we've never
She's doing it right.
No, the mayor, the mayor's veto is eight A. Nine A is a reconsideration.
Right, right. At that point, we do read the charter, and then we discuss, we reintroduce it, then we discuss it and take a vote.
Right, on nine A.
Yes, on nine A, yes. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to take a roll call. Where's Councilman Wenzel?
He's muted.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna take a roll call. Councilman, okay, Councilman Coniston.
Uh, no.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
No, no. No.
No, okay. Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Melanowski Maxwell? No. Veto failed. I mean, it's, it's successful. At this time, we have council chair, Melanowski Maxwell. This is for the council vacancy publication.
Madam Chair. Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I think Councilman Abdullah was first there.
I, I just quickly, I'm gonna I'm gonna get a quickly clarification on the vote, because there was only six council members that voted.
Right, we needed a vote of five out of six to override it.
Fails.
Right, and no, the veto is successful.
Veto's successful, correct. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Now we can go to nine B.
Now we are on nine B. This is council chairwoman Melanowski Maxwell, council vacancy publication.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council approve publication for the vacancy left by Lisa Hicks Clayton to the treasurer's office as outlined in nine B.
Second.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We will be putting out a publication for the city council vacancy. At this time, we will move on to nine C. This is council chairwoman Melanowski Maxwell. I'm going to reintroduce city council motion twenty dash one thirty-one, corporation council appointment confirmation. Apparently, there was a question last time because the motion failed. We didn't entertain it. So this time, I ask that we motion second it, discuss it, and then so again, it's introduce city council motion twenty dash one thirty-one for corporation council appointment confirmation.
Madam Chair, your last few words got caught off.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, where did, what did, are you on?
TikTok on.
Me to read it again, because something's going on with the internet.
Council Chair.
Yes, go ahead. Did you hear it?
Ju- just to help you out here, I move council reintroduce city council motion twenty dash one thirty-one, corporation council appointment confirmation as outlined in nine C.
Frozen up. Supported by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Go ahead, please.
I, I believe that, you know, Corporation Council, Miaki's been with us for a long time. It would not hurt to bring forth new names for, have new vision. So that's why I, you know, introduce it so we can discuss it. We, we need to have new names. We need change. That's my opinion.
Madam Chair.
So for me, Council Chair, Madam Chair, I, I'd like to see other names as possibilities. I'd like to see what our options are. I think our council, Gary Miaki, has done a pretty good job. I'd like to see what else is out there. I was not a part of the process when he was originally interviewed multiple years ago, before I even got on the council, so that's more than eight years ago. I'd like to see what other options we have as far as council for the or attorney for the city council and the mayor. I'd also like to suggest, as a possible option, because I did some asking around, and as I understand it, in the court system, in our judicial system, he's doing a pretty good job over there. So just something, just throwing, you know, thought out there, maybe as a possibility, the council, Gary Miaki continues as a prosecutor and in working in judges or in the court system. And maybe as a possibility, we get somebody else for our city council slash mayor. So just throwing it out there as a possible thought, because they don't necessarily have to be completely tied together. So I am open to the idea of listening to somebody else. That, that's not necessarily an indication of me not being happy with Gary Miaki. I'd just like to see what my options are. Thank you.
Councilman Coniston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, I thought we talked about having a study session on this issue. I think it's, we need to have a corporate counsel. Gary Miaki certainly is the most experienced. He's the least expensive. The people in the city know him. The two district court judges like him. But, you know, there's an old saying, if you say no on something, you have to have an option. So, so if we're not gonna have Gary Miaki, then I think it's incumbent on the council to come up, number one, to, to continue Gary Miaki while the all the courts are closed to the public, the coronavirus is pending, the, the pandemic, the lockdown, and then have a study session if we're gonna rebid it, rebid it. But I think it's incumbent on the council to come up with a alternative, another attorney who is familiar with the city, who has municipal law experience, whose rates are as low as Gary Miaki's rates are low, has good working relationship with Mark Roberts and Seacrest Wardle and so forth. I, I think the thought is that Gary is too biased, and I'm familiar with people's, or attorneys serving as city attorneys in many cities and, and in a strong mayor form of government. The, the mayor picks the corporation counsel, and that's, it's often how it works. And we should not, we should have one corporation counsel for the city, and then he has assistants that work in different specialties, but not having every branch of government having a separate attorney, eating up and wasting a lot of money on legal fees. Thank you.
Councilman Muscat?
Number one, I don't think it's council's place to find the attorney, Mr. Coniston, Councilman Coniston. That's not for us to do. Okay, that goes to the administration. And I like Councilman Dave Abdullah. I'd like to see what else is there. And to, to, to okay this the way it is, only appoints the current attorneys. But I, I, I do believe that we should, we should go to a study session with this, have the mayor bring forth a few names and go about it this way. But in the meantime, we still should allow Mr. Miaki to carry on his duties as the city attorney.
Any further discussion? At this time, let's take a vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
I think Councilman Abdullah has something.
You've already spoke. Did you want to speak again?
I spoke twice.
Well, I, 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 I just want to get a clarification of what we're voting on. Are we voting on just keeping Gary Miaki or not, or are we voting on looking at other options?
Right now, what we are voting on is reconfirming his appointment for another two years. That's what this vote is about.
Okay.
This was put for, before us back in May. It failed due to no, you know, nobody seconding it. Councilman Coniston did make the motion. It was never seconded. There was some confusion on if we had agreed to it or not, so we're bringing it back to clarify it for everybody. This would mean, if we vote yes, this means that corporate counsel, Miaki, would be reappointed for another two years.
And we would not be able to see other options.
Thank you. A no would mean that the mayor would have to go out and seek other corporate counsel for the city.
Including, just for clarification, including as a possibility, Gary Miaki.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, I'm going to take a roll call on it. Councilman Coniston, how are you voting on this?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat, how are you voting on this?
No.
Councilman Bazey, how are you voting on this?
No.
Councilman Abdullah, how are you voting on this?
No.
Councilman Wenzel, how are you voting on this?
No.
Melanowski Maxwell, I am also a no. At this time, we will refer this back to the mayor to find us a corporation counsel. Thank you. At this time, we will go on to nine C. I'm sorry, nine D. Madam Chair? I want to make a motion to refer it back to administration.
Council Chair?
Go ahead.
I move that city council refer this back to the administration to find other names to be city attorney and do it quickly so we can have a study section and to keep Gary Miaki on as the city attorney for the time being. Can I have a second?
At this time, I don't think you under, Councilman Muscat, the charter does not allow us to extend it like that, to keep him on.
Well, we need a city attorney. So, I mean, if Gary Miaki
Option is, I mean, I, I agree with what you're saying, but the charter doesn't allow us to
Okay, I move that city council refer this back to the administration for to consider other attorneys, including Mr. Miaki as our city attorney.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Chief of Staff Laslow, purchase and payment of Microsoft Surface Docking Stations.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that we concur with Christina Laslow to obtain the docking stations and accepting the two hundred sixty, two thousand five hundred twenty-five dollar coronavirus relief government grants act as outlined in nine D.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Chief of Staff Laslow, purchase and pay payment of Bizhub copiers, including paper cut feature.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Okay, I'm sorry, people, go ahead. Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Christina Laslow, Chief of Staff, with the help of Lisa Martin, Lieutenant Lisa Martin of the Fire Department. The city has been awarded two hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five under the coronavirus relief local government grants. The Fire Department has used seventy thousand of this to buy equipment and other, and other items for the firing squad, additional computers, laptops, et cetera. And these copiers will have certain features that are better able to manage print jobs. And therefore, she's asking that the city council authorize the purchase of four Bizhub three sixty I copiers, one Bizhub seven fifty I, and one Bixhub C three sixty I, as well as paper cut feature for six machines. And the quote, an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand eight hundred and two. In addition, she authorized, she asks that the council authorize payment upon successful delivery as outlined in item nine E.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is Chief of Staff Laslow, purchase and payment of Write Fax Express.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move city council approve the Write Fax, Write Fax Express in the amount not to exceed seven thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars. And I ask that the council authorize payment upon successful delivery as outlined in nine F.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those, go ahead, Councilman Bella.
I'm not, I believe that Christina's on. Christina, are you here, I hope?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'd left you a message about this. What I want to clarify, and, and just clarify, because in my mind, honestly, I don't see an advantage of this. Fax machine seems to be obviously a technology that's very little used in business at this particular point, or at the very minimal on the way out. So why would we have the need for this? And I'm not, I just want to get a clarification.
Okay, so about four years ago, we had a new phone system that was supposed to have fax capabilities. What happened is we were having, we were paying close to thirty-five hundred dollars on, to fifty-five hundred dollars a year on supporting fax, on fax lines, coaxial lines and copper lines. So we were supposed to get a fax server feature back then. There was issues between the copier. I, I don't want to say copier people, like they had a problem in the phone people, but there was many issues throughout the years where certain departments could fax with multiple steps. Other departments had to get their own little fax, and there's really not a fax solution that's citywide. So Dearborn IT, CBTS, which is our phone company, and Conica Minolta, which is our copier company, kind of came together and came up with this Write Fax solution. This is the cheapest fax server we could find. We looked through CBTS. We looked through another phone lady on, Tarek Ishma, who's on the line, also tried to come up with another type of fax server. This is the cheapest fax server. We don't get a lot of faxes, but we still do fax. Especially in the treasurer's office, the assessor's office, the ordinance department. And this is a solution that we came up with. I, I, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, my main thing was, because I know nowadays in business, a lot of people just use scanning and emailing whatever you do. I mean, there's not as much.
That's what it'll look like to the end user. That's what it looks like to us. When we get a fax, it's not going to make that do, 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 do and like have something come out of a machine. It's going to notify us on our email that you have a fax and we'll have an ability to view it, print it, save it. So it'll look just like a fax, or I'm sorry, just like a scan, but it's actually a fax.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Chief of Staff Laslow, purchase and payment of Cisco Equipment for Wi-Fi Upgrade.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Again, I make a motion that City Council concur with Christina Laslow on the IT improvements for City Hall not to exceed $4,212.28 with the help of Lisa, Lieutenant Lisa Martin, with the bid of $262,525 as outlined in nine G.
Support.
For by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Salmy, 2020 Lead Water Service Replacement Program. This is a change order number three, approval and pay request number five.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with John Salmy, our Public Works Director, who has reviewed the change order number three and pay request number five prepared by Wade Trim for 2020 Lead Water Service Replacement Program. He's seeking approval in the amount of $272,364 and approval of change order number three, which will result in $436,080 increase in the contract value. And this is, the, the main purpose of this is the cost is increases due to another 87 homes found in the field with possible lead replacement needed. And this is outlined in item nine H.
Support.
For by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I, I, I don't want to bring this up when I'm going to.
No, no, Councilman, we're taking, we're getting ready to take a vote. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Salmy.
Council Chair, point of order. Point of order, Councilwoman.
Go ahead.
Counsel, point of order, Council Chair. I'm not pleased that someone is using my, my image on their face. They need to be using their own face, not anybody else's.
Absolutely.
I don't know who that person is. It's not me. That's not me. And that's, that's being on this, on this Zoom meeting illegally, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I understand your, your, your concerns because you are a councilman and this is implying that you are in here twice and that's not good.
Correct.
It looks like they have left the meeting. So at this point in time, we will move on. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Salmy, 2020 and 2021 Street Repair Contract Amendment Hard Rock Concrete.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with John Salmy, our Director of Public Works, who's requesting approval to amend the current contract with Hard Rock Concrete to complete the 2020-21 Street Repair Program. And in correspondence with Wade Trim, enclosed as a letter from Hard Rock Concrete honoring the current contract unit pricing with the exception of $2 per square yard increase for eight inch concrete and 50 cents per square foot increase for four to six inch concrete. Therefore, the department recommends that Hard Rock Concrete contract be amended for 2020-21. Street repairs in an amount of $1,807,675. And further request that construction engineering budget be established for Wade Trim in the amount of $150,000 as outlined in item nine I.
Support.
For by Councilman.
Madam Chair.
Chair, you're opposed.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
All those in favor say aye.
Madam Chair.
I'm discussing.
Okay, go ahead.
Cool. Go ahead, Councilman. Bill, you were first.
So Bazey.
Thank you. So two things on this. So the motion says the street amendment for Hard Rock Concrete, but also we, it's mentioned for a weight trim for $150,000. That's a lot of money. So one, I think those two should be, there should be two motions. And the second thing on that one, I think, I, I don't know, I, since I've been on the council, I've not seen that goes out for bid for weight trim. It looks like we keep going back to the same company. And there's no bids going out for anybody else to bid on this. So I'm voting no because this, this should be two motions on this instead of one.
Further discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So I have a question for our Director, John Salmy, and I apologize because I know I spoke with you a couple of days ago, but I forgot to bring up this particular issue. On the construction engineering budget, there is established for weight trim and a budget of an amount of $150,000. The question for you, or the question that should be made, in my opinion, should be either up to $150,000 or a specific amount, because at this particular point, we are automatically giving them $150,000 straight up, even if it's less based on this motion. Can you please clarify that for me?
Sure, that's a good point. Maybe it should say in there not to exceed 150,000. That's based on construction quantities and length of construction. So I, I agree with you that it probably should say not to exceed that amount.
Okay, so Council Chair, you want me to amend the motion?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion from our Director of Public Works, John Salmy, requesting, in addition to the rest of the motion, further requesting a construction engineering budget be established for weight trim in the amount not to exceed $150,000 as outlined in item nine, I get my mouse to work, nine I.
Support.
For by Councilman Muscat, is there any further discussion in regards to this amended? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey, okay, this time I will take a roll call. Councilman Constant?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel? Uh oh, Councilman Wenzel, you need to unmute yourself.
All right, no.
Okay, Melonowski Maxwell, yes, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Salmy, DTE Upgrade to Outdoor Lighting at DPW Facility.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move Council approve the public, John Salmy's request to upgrade the current lighting from high pressure sodium to LED in an amount of $6,222 to DTE for the conversion of 17 lights. And also seeking approval to allow the mayor to sign the agreement with DTE as outlined in nine J.
Support.
For by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Emergency Manager Gavin, 2019 Taxes for the Cap Properties.
I.
Councilman Muscat.
I, I don't truly understand what this is, is we're approving payment? Or can someone help?
Before we can discuss, we need to have a motion in a second.
Oh.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
For discussion purposes, I move we concur with our Emergency Manager, Lee Gavin, and approve the payment to Wayne County Treasurer's Office for the homes that, for the cap properties that were purchased in 2019 as outlined in item nine K.
Further support, for by Councilman Muscat, now we open it up for discussion.
What, I just want to know what this really is.
Did you want to be recognized?
Yes, Councilor, sorry.
Okay, Councilman Muscat, go ahead, please.
What is all of this? Are we paying Wayne County the taxes that are due on the homes or? What is it?
Yes.
Purchase of the homes.
These are the homes.
Is it purchasing or the taxes?
These are the homes we purchased 2019. They have yet to go to a contractor. Since we had these homes in 19, we owe the taxes to Wayne County. We neglected to pay them. We got advised. So that's what this is for, to pay the taxes for 19 last year. In 20, this present year, the Assessor Comer will put these on the tax roll where we'll be exempt paying these taxes. But we have to pay them for 19 and it took us a while. And now every month we don't pay them, there's a 1% charge.
Thank you.
That's why if we can get a check by November 30th, we can pay these out in the future. These homes still have to go to developers. We have seven homes, two vacant properties and one commercial property. So we, we need to work with our city attorney and, and get a contract so we can get these out to the developers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion, Councilman Abdullah.
So, uh, this is for Lee Gavin, please. So if these were on the books in 2019, what's happening with them? I mean, that's, that's a long time. Right now, as we speak, we're talking about a year and obviously they had been let go for about two years, therefore, or maybe even three, actually three years. And that's why they went to foreclosure. So who's maintaining those all these years? And most specifically after they went to foreclosure in 19, it'd be our responsibility. Are we maintaining these? What are we doing? Because there's been a lot of concerns from different residents. And, and some of these are, this near some of these properties where they had rats, tall grass, et cetera, et cetera. What are we doing to keep, keep track of these homes?
We're maintaining these. We have the contract with landscape for the summer to cut the grass, in the winter to do the snow. We shut the water off in the buildings. DPW did that. So when, when we finally get a contract and the council determines which developers get each home and they buy the home back from the city, all that expense will be included in there, the maintenance and all that. So.
So why, why did we not get rid of these in 19? There was no COVID situation.
No, we do not, that's something I've been working with the city attorney and, and we don't have the, the contract yet that we had for the year before, 2018. Council, Councilor Miyaki's got to come up with that and then go before the council and then you as a body would determine which developers get each home.
Okay, so with, no, but with due respect, I, I, I'm not satisfied with the answer as of yet because these had gone into foreclosure, we received them, I presume in 18 or maybe early 19. There was no COVID situation at the time. Why did we, A, not get rid of them and B, we continue to maintain them, of course, at our expense? And then C, to potential neighbors next to these homes, because I can tell you, I for one would not want to be next to, being obviously in the realty business, I've seen foreclosure properties and what they look like. They're usually not the best maintained properties, to say the least. So with that being the case, why did we not get rid of them in 19? I mean, if we were in, what contract would we be waiting for? And if that contract was not done by Council Gary Miyaki, why not?
All I can say is, Councilman, we purchased those in July of 19. We've had them almost a year and a half. The, the properties are still in our name. As soon as we get a contract, then we can bring it to the, the council. I, I cannot do the contract, so I understand what you're saying.
Well, then with due respect to whoever dropped the ball, the ball was dropped on this then. I'm, I'm just calling it the way it is. This is, I mean, it is what it is now, but I'm not satisfied with it. Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Miyaki has his hand up. Can somebody unmute him?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, basically, we did not have a program in place for 2019. Unlike the prior time, we did actually have a program with bids and everything else in place. There was some uncertainty with respect to how we were going to actually go about doing it. Want to call him Chief Gavin, but Emergency Manager Gavin wasn't quite sure how we were going to end up proceeding. It was unclear to me what the, what we were looking at in terms of proceeding with these. And I believe that is what ended up happening. Lee, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but that was my sense of how this ended up happening, that we did not have a clear notion of what the city's decision makers would want to end up doing in this context.
But Gary, call me crazy, but this is not acceptable because if you've got a program that's done year after year after year after year, you just have some slight adjustments to be made. You obviously have new addresses to be done. And then you go through the same process you did the year before and a year before and a year before, and it was successful. My biggest concern here is people that live next to these homes and they're just left, more than likely boarded up, more than likely or potentially with rats, more than likely or potentially with long grass, more than likely with snow left on the ground and more than likely no picket fence, no dog, no kids playing in that yard. And then because we didn't have a program, when the year before we had a program, the year before we had a program.
No, actually, actually we only had a program the one year.
But even if it's one, one year, that shouldn't be that much.
Yeah, but we start and we started in March, Dave.
Okay.
Councilman, so you know, the problem was is that no one made the decision to buy the properties until around June or July. And then they swung it that they were going to end up doing so. I don't know. It wasn't included. So the whole basis for the program was based on releasing RFPs in the March timeframe. So our whole timeframe was blown at that point.
You answered it. With due respect to whoever dropped the ball, the ball was dropped. This is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question. Is any of these properties occupied? Have we verified that we do not have squatters in them?
We do not believe, we had, we had one family that we were working with until we had the developers and that gentleman passed away. So we should be good. There's one home we still got to check. Some people are moving out and I got to see if they're out.
They've been letting them live there basically rent free for the last year?
There's some discretion between the counties and, and taxes. They've been paying the taxes, so we're still working on that.
Yeah, they were the owner.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Human Resource Director Sabota Perry, 6055 backslash 6056 Reporting Assistance.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that City Council concur with Human Resources Director Elizabeth Sova Perry in using Plant Moran as the consultant for the Affordable Care Act and, and others as outlined in nine L.
Support.
For by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Yeah, two things. One, I have not seen, that hasn't gone out for bid. That's the number one. So it looks like we just awarded this company with no bid, nothing on bid net. And the second question is, I know there are auditors, you know, for the city. So I haven't seen anything about conflict of interest, you know, it's like auditing something that they, they actually do and for, for this particular resolution. So that's, there's two items. So I'm, I have an issue with this one.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
This time, we need to take a roll call vote. Councilman Conston.
Yes.
Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Bazey.
No.
Councilman Abdullah.
Yes.
Councilman Wensel.
Yes.
Villanowski Maxwell is a yes. It does pass. Next item is Ordnance Enforcement and Animal Control Director McIntyre. This is with the Michigan Humane Society Agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that we concur with our Ordnance Enforcement and Animal Control Director Jack McIntyre and approve the contract, uh, the renewed agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Michigan Humane Society for housing and care of domestic animals and injured wildlife is outlined in nine M.
Support.
Or I'm not seeing who's supporting it.
Dave.
Councilman Abdullah. Okay, your your little box didn't light up. Sorry. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Deputy Director Conston, two thousand and twenty one, SMART contract.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move City Council authorize the mayor and asserted city clerk to sign two copies of the municipal community credit contract for year two, what, two thousand and twenty one and send back to Kim Constance, Deputy Parks and Recreation Director to attach exhibits and forward to SMART. The City of Dearborn Heights will receive fifty six thousand eight hundred ten dollars of municipal credit monies and ninety two thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars in community credit monies as outlined in nine M.
Support.
For by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Deputy Director Conston, two thousand and twenty one, CARES Act Funding Contract Through SMART.
I can't find that.
That's Park and Recreation Deputy Director.
Oh.
Yes, nine O.
I'm looking on my iPad. I can't find it. I got nine N and I don't have it. It doesn't go to O.
I know. Uh, I saw that actually. One second.
If somebody else can take this, I'd appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bella.
I move that we concur with Parks and Recreation Deputy Director Kim Conston approving the two thousand and twenty one CARES Act Funding Contract Through SMART as outlined in item nine, I'm sorry, yeah, in item nine O.
Support.
For by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have a second reading for ordinance H dash two zero dash zero three, zoning ordinance amendment, outdoor seating regulations, section thirty six dash one seventy.
Madam Chair.
Sue.
And Conston, I.
Yes, Councilman Conston.
Yes, sorry. Uh, I move that ordinance H dash twenty dash O three regarding outdoor seating regulations uh, be read for the second, considered read for the second time, is outlined in eleven A.
Support.
For by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
What is, what what is the ordinance actually saying? We had a gentleman on earlier. We couldn't respond to him. So I'd like to know exactly what that ordinance seating regulation state. Does anybody have that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually, it was uh, section three one seven zero. He made an amendment for uh, seating, uh, just like from fifty percent. Okay, let me see. It's uh, if you look, if you look at that PDF, it's in on page ninety four.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And this is going to help our 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 businesses?
Yes, it allows it. Sorry.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bella.
Sort of the primary change, uh, Councilman Muscat, is the outdoor seating capacity before uh, the previous one, the outdoor, the way it was, the outdoor seating capacity must not be greater than fifty percent of the indoor seating capacity. Now this allows for that where there's more outdoor seating than there's indoor seating. And the primary reason for that is with COVID, Corona and all the issues uh, and the pandemic that we're all dealing with, uh, there's a lot of people that want to sit outside and don't want to go inside restaurants, not to mention that during this particular lockdown for three weeks, none of us are allowed to go inside restaurants. So they give the the restaurants, the bars, et cetera, the option of having outdoor seating provided they abide by the different regulations and conditions of our building department. That's basically what we are voting on, allowing more than fifty percent to be outside uh, for the future too. And 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 with this COVID thing, obviously, the premise as earlier stated, this thing is not going to go, well, I hope it goes away yesterday. But more than likely, we're going to still be dealing with this this coming spring, at least at some level. And at the very minimal, there's still going to be a lot of people that are uh, paranoid, concerned, or just used to the fact that they don't want to go inside and be around, um, you know, the general public. So I I fully support this particular.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here.
Here.
Councilman Wensel.
Can we consider this a final reading? Is this uh, gets it passed?
And we needed two readings. This is the second reading. So after this, it will be passed if we all vote yes, or if we vote yes on it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. It does pass. Next, we have Councilman Muscat, Resolution to Approve Mr. Abdul-Hak Appointment from November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty to December twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty to assist city treasurer during the transaction time.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move City Council approve Mr. Zohair Abdelhak appointment from November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty to December twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty to assist the city treasurer during the transition time, limited to the total cost not to exceed eight thousand five hundred, charged to the city's uh, uh, year twenty 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 one tax administration fees balance account number one oh one dash zero 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 dash four oh two point nine 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 as outlined in eleven B.
Support.
For by Councilman Bazey, um, I have to say on this, I do agree that um, Treasurer Hicks Clayton does need help. Um, I'm a little concerned about it coming out of a revenue account. I spoke with former Treasurer Riley and I understand that we can't make payments out of a revenue account. It would have to be noted as a different account if we do pay it. And also too, in the past, our procedure such as when um, former Treasurer Abdelhak took over, we negotiated an hourly amount with um, Treasurer Riley, and I think that's what we need to do on this. I mean, and also too, I don't understand why we're not going to Treasurer Riley in regards to this. Um, I've asked him and he said that whenever Treasurer Hicks Clayton has asked him a question, he has answered it for her. So I guess I'm a little confused on this. If anybody could answer me in that, I would appreciate it.
Well, I just figured that since uh, former treasurer had a different duties now and uh, he did help out with uh, Mr. Zohair Abdelhak, that Mr. Hock can also help uh, the new treasurer. And uh, I I don't understand why we can't take it out of that administration fee balance account since it's there. Um, no different than I guess taking it out of the two million dollars to make ends meet.
Treasurer, former Treasurer Riley on here still? Because I did have quite a conversation with him earlier and he explained that we can't take it out of a revenue account. We can take it out of a different account, but revenue is just a receiving account.
He is unmuted.
Oh, there he is. Go ahead.
Yes. Hello, I, I, yeah, okay. Um, yeah, I I just think that, you know, it can come out of the the Treasurer's Office part-time budget and um, you would just make a budget amendment to um, facilitate additional funds being in the Treasurer's Office part-time budget to cover that, right?
Council Chair.
Muscat.
A revenue, a revenue account is not, is not appropriate. Chair, then I I move to amend my my motion that the eighty five hundred dollars be charged to the uh, overtime budget for the Treasurer's Office as outlined in eleven B.
Support.
For by Councilman Bazey, I have um, Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, very briefly, um, I think number one, this request would have to come from the treasurer. Number two, I don't know how the eighty five hundred dollar amount was arrived at. And number three, if it would be full-time or part-time. And appointment to what? It's it's really just a budget amendment. I think the uh, elected treasurer is is able to you know, within the budget or if the budget is amended, do whatever she wants. So I don't know that it's an appointment to anything. It's just uh, uh, and uh, Mr. Abdelhak, the interim treasurer, indicated he's willing to do this. But I'm I'm not sure calling it an appointment is maybe the correct terminology.
Well, it would be a a part-time appointment. Um, I'm sure you had part-time appointment at Dearborn not too long ago. Um.
I wasn't appointed. I was a contract employee.
Well, i- i- it's going to be uh, through December twenty fifth. And so that is part-time. This is not going to go any longer than that, just to help a transition period. Most people get a transition period and uh, I will let the council people vote on this.
Is it forty hours a week or twenty hours a week or no specified?
It it's no more than eight thousand five hundred. So if we put a thousand hours in it, it's still going to be only eighty five hundred hour, eighty five hundred dollars at the very most, at the very most. Doesn't matter if it's forty hours a week or uh, five hundred dollars a week.
Right, but and how is the eighty five hundred arrived at? That amount?
You know, we paid the other deputy, the the other person doing the transition thirty five dollars an hour. So you could figure that out mathematically.
Well, thank you, thank you. I, and I don't know that Mr. Brusavich was, that was utilized and um, that's all I have to say, madam. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, next we have Treasurer Hicks Clayton. Where is she? We got unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. What I wanted to say, I had mentioned this earlier, that this account that's listed here is a revenue account. You cannot pay from a revenue account. We would have to do an amendment to the treasurer's budget and it would be part-time, not overtime. It would be the part-time line item. And when you come out to the eighty five hundred, that's, I mean, based on you're talking four weeks, that's over sixty dollars an hour. That's what we had talked about thirty five dollars an hour was fair because that's what we had seen with a former clerk Brusavitz as well as with our former treasurer, John Riley. So I think thirty five is fair for that. And again, it would be, I thought, part-time because we do still have the deputy uh, treasurer is going to be here full-time. And I I mean, I welcome and I look forward to having Mr. Abdelhak assist because he's very helpful, as is uh, Mr. Riley, which I mentioned. But um, I would think part-time at at thirty five dollars an hour. And if you figure, let's say, twenty-five hours a week, you're looking at thirty five hundred dollars versus eighty five hundred. Or if you do twenty hours a week, that's twenty eight hundred. So that's just what I wanted to share with you to clear up some of those uh, questions and confusion. Again, this is a revenue account. We cannot pay from a revenue account. I would have to amend the budget for this department. Thank you.
Okay, um, I guess I'm still a little confused because um, former Treasurer Riley is still willing to help in regards to the transition and I don't understand why, you know, he's, I mean, he's answered any questions the Treasurer Hicks Clayton has had. So I'm just confused. I I don't know where I would think that he, I mean, I I know former Treasurer Abdelhak knows the job, but I think former treasurer, but with all the years he was in there. So I guess I'm just confused.
I have a motion and I don't know if anybody's seconded it. So I think Bill Bazey seconded it. Yeah.
I did, I mean, I mean, she took it down, I think.
Madam Chair. It looks like we got internet issues here. Madam Chair. Everything's froze. Go ahead, clerk.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, um, the former clerk did not get paid thirty five dollars an hour. I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, I remember that. See, normal procedure is uh, the treasurer would negotiate with the person that they were hiring to transition them and then have a letter sent over to HR is what procedure normally is. So. All right, I've got, I've got. Bella, Bella.
So I've got a couple of questions. First of all, um, I thank uh, our former treasurer's affair for serving during the last four, five months and appreciate him jumping in during the time where we had obviously our former John uh, Treasurer John Riley had resigned. So I appreciate everything he's done. And of course, I appreciate John Riley, everything he's put in. I I'm really concerned about the dollar figure. I I do believe that uh, the new treasurer would need somebody possibly to help her in transitioning. I do understand that particular process. My preference would be to have John Riley, with due respect to Zohair Abdelhak, uh, be in that particular process because of, uh, you know, the the amount of experience that he's got uh, put in, the amount of years that he's put into the city as a treasurer. He'd be my preferred choice initially. If not, of course, Zohair Abdelhak, I'm sure would do the best he can and 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 help get the job done. My concern is the dollar figure. That's my biggest concern. So who they pick, I I have my preferences, but at the end of the day, it's up to them. But the dollar figure, which I I I I respect as Zohair Abdelhak at the beginning of the meeting for saying that that was not the dollar figure he was looking for and he even mentioned he would do it for free. So that tells me that this thing is not all about money for him and I respect him for that. With that being the case, even if you took thirty five dollars an hour, multiply it by forty hours, you have fourteen hundred dollars. You multiply that by four weeks, you have fifty six hundred dollars. That's still quite a bit below the amount of eighty five hundred. So personally, what I'd like to see is a dollar figure per hour and what is the maximum amount of hours per week that would be hurting somebody for? And then I'd be okay with okay in this motion. The way it stands right now, I would not be okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like some of the people are having trouble with losing their signals. It seems to be an unstable internet connection out there today for several people. I'm waiting to see if everybody's moving because I, at one time or another, everybody froze up. Councilman Muscat?
No, no questions. I just wanted to know I'm still here.
Okay, good. Yeah, Councilman Wensel looks like he's having problems. He lost his internet connection. Okay, well, at this time, we're going to vote on it. I see iPhone Tom in here now. Let me unmute him. Councilman Wensel, if that's you, please unmute. He's on his phone. Come on.
There you are.
Okay, good. You're there. Yeah, this time, we are voting on the amended resolution for Councilman Muscat to approve Mr. Abdelhak appointment from November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty to December twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty to assist city treasurer during the transition time. And we did amend that to the part-time budget. Was that correct?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
No. No.
And let's take a roll call. Councilman Conston.
No.
Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Bazey.
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah.
No.
Councilman Wensel.
Yes.
Yes.
Domski Maxwell is no. It's a tie.
Motion, tie?
We only have six people.
Motion's approved then.
No.
It failed. I don't know. It's a tie. Do we want to bring this back again at the next meeting when we possibly have seven people?
Well, Council Chair.
Bella?
Um, well, again, my preference is I think John Riley, because of his experience, if he's willing to do it, that'd be the preferred choice. If we could amend the dollar figure, I'm willing to go forward with it, but not with that dollar.
I move city council move this to the next meeting when there's seven people and maybe we can tweak this motion, tweak this a little bit to make it more pleasurable for everyone.
Thank you. Let's move this to the next one since it was a tie. There's nothing we can do.
Are you going to motion, a new motion to move it to the next meeting?
Yes. I don't.
Council Chair.
Oh, Councilman Wensel, go ahead.
Yeah, can we add there that we could add John Riley on there as a possible part-time? We only had one option there.
What's happening is we already have a letter of agreement with former treasurer John Riley to do that. So I guess that's why I was confused.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Bazey?
Okay, as Councilman Abdullah mentioned, to amend the motion to include the dollar figure, I mean, I can do that. I can amend the motion to limit it to thirty-five dollars an hour, if it's okay with the chair.
Right.
Would there be a number of hours too?
I mean, we can limit the amount of hours also. I mean, we.
If it's, well, I'm sorry, Council Chair.
You know, we had a motion on the floor in the beginning. It was seconded. We never took a vote. And the vote was taken and it was tied. So I don't know if a tie is either an approval or a disapproval. My understanding, it's always an approval.
It was not a majority, so that would mean it would fail.
Okay, it would fail. Then the motion failed. So that is, that's, that's what it is. Then it failed. We did take a motion. Now, if there's another, somebody wants to make a motion on bringing us back with something different, then we can do that.
I think it's probably best to wait till we have seven people, especially since we do have an option of former treasurer Riley is helping treasurer Hicks Clayton now anyways. If she has a question, he has answered her questions.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
Councilman Abdullah mentioned also that if we amend it, you know, he doesn't have a problem voting on it. And again, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to limit it to thirty-five dollars an hour and part-time, so thirty-two hours maximum per week.
I'll support that.
Is there any discussion? I guess, you know, and our clerk, our clerk brought up a valid point that former clerk Persevitz is only making thirty dollars an hour and he was here for years. So I don't know how we're arriving at the dollar amount of thirty-five dollars. Can somebody tell me that?
Price to me.
Well, this is for Councilman Bill Bazey and maybe I'm speaking prematurely on behalf of Zuhair Abdal Hawk, but I'm sure I can speak on his behalf. They're five bucks, I'm going to make or break them. So maybe Councilman Bazey, do you want to maybe amend that to make it thirty dollars an hour?
Okay, I amend my, I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilman Abdullah. I amend my motion to, for thirty-five thousand, thirty dollars an hour, maximum thirty-two hours per week.
Support.
Support.
For by Councilman Muscat. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston?
And that would be with the former interim treasurer, Zuhair Abdal Hawk, or it would be with either, I'll say either former treasurer.
It's for the motion, Mr. Zuhair Abdal Hawk. Thank you.
Hawk only?
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify. Somebody says Zuhair Abdal Hawk only?
I'm just clarifying. Sorry, Councilman Abdullah. I'm clarifying the motion, you know, thirty thousand hour up to thirty-two hours per week for the motion eleven B. And it has Mr. Zuhair Abdal Hawk on the appointment for that motion.
One issue with that is our part-time only goes up to twenty-eight hours. If we go over twenty-eight hours, they couldn't come out of the part-time budget.
Okay, we can amend that for twenty-eight hours max.
No, wait, we got it correct.
Council Chair. I got, I got a quick question. Is, is John Riley still a letter of agreement in effect?
I'm going to unmute Treasurer Riley. I do assume it is, isn't it?
I, I mean, I would assume it was, but I, you know, that would be, I guess, between, up to the new treasurer, you know, I mean, that was agreement between Treasurer Abdal Hawk and myself at the time. It was thirty-five dollars an hour. During that time, I charged the city one and a half hours, so fifty-two dollars. So.
You gave a lot more time than an hour and a half, didn't you?
Yeah, I did. A lot of the time I didn't bill because I wanted, you know, I just wanted to make sure that the transition went well. That was really the most important thing. And I think that's what Mr. Abdal Hawk was saying at the beginning of the meeting. You know, we just want to make sure that the office continues to operate in the most efficient way possible.
I think we should leave the option open for our new treasurer to consult John Riley.
I agree.
Okay, at this time, are we ready to vote or do we want further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No, this is to just have treasurer, former interim treasurer, Zuhair Abdal Hawk, correct?
Not John Riley. Okay, let's take the vote again so everybody is sure what we're voting on. This is to appoint former treasurer Abdal Hawk to the part-time position at thirty dollars an hour for the treasurer. Do you know that we still have a valid appointment with John Riley, our former treasurer before that? So this would appoint treasurer, former treasurer Abdal Hawk. Vote on yes.
Twenty-eight hour and capping it at twenty-eight.
Hours.
Right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Let's do a roll call. Councilman Conston?
No.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilman Abella?
Yes.
And Wensel?
I am voting no because I think we should have the same agreement with Abdal Hawk that we had with John Riley with a letter of intent and that create a new position.
I also am voting no because we also still have a valid letter of agreement with John Riley and I don't think it's necessary to appoint another person since he has the most knowledge. I mean, I know former treasurer Abdal Hawk did the job and I respect him for that. But I think the knowledge goes a little bit deeper with former treasurer Riley. So at this time, this has failed. Let's move this to the next meeting while we have seven council members to decide on this. Next item on the agenda, let me see here. Okay, this is comments from council members.
Madam Chair.
Before I move on, I'd like to say I'd like to wish.
Council Chair, you froze up on us again.
Okay, let me go further. Okay, at this time, we are going to open it up to comments from council members. Before I call on the council members, I'd like to wish, I'd like to take the time to wish everyone and their family a happy Thanksgiving. Is there any other comments from the council table?
Madam Chair.
I have Councilman, Councilman Wensel and Councilman Bazey. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. I also would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a safe one. Take all the precautions necessary. And I too appreciate Abdal Hawk's help with the transition and his time he spent as treasurer. And I'd like to see him also be, him and John Riley have access to Lisa Hicks to Clayton to, to transfer her over to this position. I think they both have valuables, skills and knowledge that she could use. When we do that next meeting, I'd like to have that option available.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from the council table? Councilman Bazey?
Okay, I sent an email, a couple of emails to the building director, Mr. Domski. I have not heard anything. So I want to make sure, I know the mayor likes to have interactions with, if there's an issue with anything, you know, with, or any of the directors to go directly to the person, you know, through email instead of the council. And I just want to make sure that Mr. Domski received my two emails. And if he wants, I can, if he prefers for me to bring up these issues at the meeting here, I will. But if he wants to address them via email, I can still do that. So I just want to see what his preference is.
Oh, there's the mayor. Go ahead, please.
I don't know what the memos, emails you're talking about, but if Mr. Domski is on the, on the meeting, he can respond.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. I didn't CC you on it. I didn't want to waste your time. I did send him directly to Mr. Domski. So I just want to make sure, in honor of respect, I want to make sure that we address some concerns from the residents to whatever bill, department had. I go directly to that department head, but if I can't get the answer within one or two, you know, weeks, you know, one of them is three weeks, you know, then I guess, you know, I need to address them at the council meeting because residents who bring up these concerns are also listening to these council meetings. So with that, I want to ask Mr. Domski, does he want me to address issues related to his department in a meeting here, or he wants me to address them in a separate email so he can address them, so I can forward it to the residents?
And then he's got his hand up. Go ahead, Larry Domski, Director Domski.
Yes, I did receive your email. I did make contact with that homeowner you had questions about. I thought you were just forwarding information to me to make contact with them. I didn't see, know if you want to respond, but I will respond from now on.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So I know that the issue has been addressed. So if you can respond back to me or any council member, if they raise an issue that you addressed it, I really appreciate that.
Yes, and I have responded to you in the past. I just thought that was just a, I thought you were just passing the information along to me.
No, because I got two emails from that person. So I just want to make sure, you know, it was addressed. Thank you.
Yes, I talked to him. Actually, I had several conversations, I think, last week and one today, a matter of fact.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, next I have Councilman Muscat.
Are we doing anything for public announcements? Are we just doing the council? Did we skip public announcements?
We're at the council table still. Public announcements is next.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I have a few things here. First one, I believe this will be directed at the mayor. A few weeks ago, he charged our former treasurer with not coming to city council to purchase items. And it's, you know, back in July twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty, city council subpoenaed records from Plant Moran and from the mayor, Dan Piletko. And it was a list of city-owned vehicles, including the VIN numbers and to whom the vehicle was assigned. As of six thirty-two twenty, the schedule of vehicles brought and sold disposed of over a period of five years with the VIN number assignment. I then looked at Mr. Mayor's car, whose car is a two thousand eighteen Ford Taurus Interceptor. City council never approved a new car for the mayor. Sticker price on that was over thirty thousand dollars. And the mayor provided scanned documents of Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority listing VIN and license plate numbers for what was understood to be all Dearborn Heights vehicles insured through MMRMA. There is no document that exists that identifies the vehicle assigned to the mayor. I want to know how he got a newer car in two thousand eighteen. I've been on council since two sixteen. We never approved a new car. So how is this possible that you can go out and spend thirty thousand dollars on a police interceptor without council approval? That is, that is totally wrong for you to do that. You also sent me an email after I sent you one, Mr. Mayor, about giving someone a raise without coming to city council. It was a twenty-five percent raise. And the, the way you worded it, that you normally give adjustments. You don't give adjustments unless it comes through council. Now, I don't understand why you can accuse someone and you hid your car for two years. You bought it in February of two eighteen. This really bothers me. What else has gone on behind city council back? I've even requested, not even requested, I did say that I'd like to see records of gas and mileage driven private. And I didn't want to do a resolution, but you're really forcing my hand in doing that and forcing everybody to do a lot of homework on their vehicles. And matter of fact, there'll be GPS by the time I get done. And we will have an accounting of every single vehicle the city owns. And that's my rant for the week. And that's a shame that the comptroller, the treasurer and you kept that from city council. You all kept it from us. You went out and got another car. I kept looking at that car you were driving and I'm kind of a car guy myself. And it sure didn't look like the car that was older than, than a two fifteen or two sixteen. That's my rant for the day, Council Chair. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to respond?
No response is needed. We know what he did.
Muscat, please, order, point of order. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, I assume I'm unmuted. Any vehicle I have was approved by city council, so.
Show me the motion. Show me the approval.
I have the floor, Councilman, please.
Point of order.
So I indicated to you that I, any vehicle that's purchased with, is with council approval and council would have approved the vehicle.
Show me where we approved your, show me the motion and the approval for a car for you that you're driving currently. I, I demand that you show it to us. You didn't get one. You spent thirty thousand dollars of taxpayer money for your own good. And that's ridiculous. You need to give up that car or put your resignation in.
You need to put.
You did it behind our back.
Madam Chair, we can't have a discussion.
Guys, both of yous, please.
He can say what he wants. We all know he's wrong. It never came forward to city council.
Point of order. Mayor, go ahead, please.
I've already indicated, I mean, he's out of order. He, he just rambles on, accuses everybody and the heck with him.
The shoe fits, wear it. And Council Chair, I request a motion that was brought before council to approve a vehicle for him and the vote. And who voted? There is none, but I want to see it. He can prove it to me. I will definitely apologize to him, but there was never a vote by him.
You never apologized. You just make accusations.
What, Mr. Mayor, you know what? You lie. You stole from the city. You stole from the city.
Point of order, guys. Let's move on. Next, we have Councilman Wensel. Councilman Wensel? Oops, he's muted. Councilman Wensel?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, yeah, I already spoke, but that's a tough act. Okay, yeah, I already spoke, but that's a tough act to follow.
Okay, Councilman Abdullah.
Um, yeah. Well, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And a happy new year. And I hope we don't have to deal with this pandemic and all the different things that we're all dealing with in the future. And wish everybody's family nothing but good health. On another note, I hate to jump off like this, but based on the current statement made by Councilman Ray Muscat, I for one would like to concur and would like to see that motion. I didn't have the question, but now that he's brought it up, I would like to see that motion and approval by our city council, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, with due respect. So we can move forward with this. Thank you. And I hope my Lions win.
Okay, is there any more comments from the council table?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah, I'm Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to wish everyone a happy and blessed and safe Thanksgiving. I want to congratulate former councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton on her election and wish her good luck. I hope the council and the city can move forward into this next year and get some important issues faced and done and not spend a lot of time throwing stones at each other. Not saying anything about the most recent comments, but some of the issues that we face, the city faces as a whole. I think the downturn as the result of the coronavirus pandemic and the resulting lockdown is, is really going to hit the state hard. And I hope I'm wrong. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council members? This time I will move on to community announcements. I have Director Head Dad. Go ahead, please. Whoops, hold on, we got to unmute you.
Everybody hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to also wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving on behalf of myself and the Parks and Recreation Department. A couple of things, I wanted to let you guys know what's going on within our department. As you're probably aware, unfortunately, we cannot, are not able to do the tree lighting ceremony this year. But I have been on the phone with Santa Claus and he, I came up with an idea to do a Zoom with Santa Claus. We're going to do that on December 15th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And this for children of Dearborn Heights, all the good boys and girls to Zoom with Santa. All you got to do to register is email us at recreation@ci dearborn-hights.mi.us. And the flyer is online on our city webpage and also on Facebook. Also, the other things that are happening, the Santa mailbox is out there in front of city hall. Something new this year, Santa actually gave me some stationery. So what I did is put it online. You can print it up. You can also still write a letter to Santa as well. Put your address on there for the children's name and address. And Santa will return with a special letter to each child that sends it in. More things that are doing within the senior centers now. They started a Zoom trivia event going to be happening on Mondays. And all the information will be online tomorrow. I just got that information Monday and I forgot to put it online today or yesterday, but I will have that up there. Also, we're going to be starting Zoom Bingo eventually. And some other more Zoom events that are happening. Also, within the senior centers, we're going to be getting some plain and simple 18-inch wreaths and possibly some maybe one foot or two foot tall Christmas trees for our seniors to start decorating and possibly hand out to some of our other seniors that are homebound. Our senior directors, coordinators are going to be going around and delivering those once they're completed. And actually picking them up and delivering them to other seniors throughout the city. Another thing they're going to be doing is I'm going to start a new thing called Christmas in a Bag this year. Going to be on December 21st. I'm going to be at both senior centers. And we're looking for donations throughout the city from local vendors. We're still trying to figure out some numbers on how many bags we're going to get. But it's going to be a drive-through event where the seniors come in and who knows, maybe Santa will be there as well, just to wish the seniors a Merry Christmas and all. And last but not least, this year, I know the city beautiful used to do this, we're going to start over again and do the holiday light decorating contest. All you have to do is submit an email to the Parks and Recreation Department, recreation@ci dearborn-hights.mi.us. And we'll have a group of judges going around. Let me see here. It's going to be the weekend of December 18th through the 20th, going to go around, judge them. And we're going to have some prizes. This is also sponsored by English Gardens. Just got that yesterday. They're going to donate some prizes for us to hand out to these, to the winners. So just wanted to say, give you guys all an update what's going on and we're looking at some more programs coming up for seniors and everybody else. So thank you very much. And once again, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next we have our new treasurer, Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to, if I may, through the chair, to Councilman Conston, thank you, by the way. I appreciate you extending that. Congratulations. It means a lot to me. I did want to tell you, I have your question that you asked. This is my day three on the job, so I'm going to look into that more for you, get to your answer. But I always want to encourage council members, if you have questions, to please email us here at the treasurer's office so we can respond promptly to you. And I wish to extend my most sincere appreciation to all of our residents in our community. It's been an honor to serve you the last nine years as a Dearborn Heights City Council member. And I look forward to serving you as your treasurer. So with this, I want to make a quick announcement that the winter taxes are being mailed out on December 1st. So be watching for your winter taxes, again, being mailed out on December 1st. There are several ways you can pay. You can visit us online and see those options. But you can pay online. You can use an e-check. There is a $3 fee to use an e-check. You can use a credit card or a debit card, which is a 3% of the total bill, which is a fee of processing fee. And of course, we have a Dropbox, because with COVID, you know, city hall is closed right now only by appointment. And that's because of the Michigan pause. But you can use the Dropbox out front, but please, 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 please do not drop cash. Okay, so no cash in the Dropbox. We want to make sure you don't do that. And winter taxes are due by February 15th, 2021. So it's kind of hard to say that it doesn't roll off your lips so well, but 2021 is coming up. And of course, you can visit us online for the Dearborn Heights Treasurer's Office. And I too would love to wish everyone a very safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Next we have Library McCaffrey.
Well, Council Chair and Mayor, just wanted to remind everyone that although we are on pause during this unfortunate turn of events, we are still going to be doing curbside service and we still offer delivery service. We did have to pull back our, some of our lobby service in terms of our, and our computer by appointment service for the time being due to kind of a high local case count. But we'll be able to help people as much as we can through farm service and curbside printing as we've done before. But yeah, that's all for now. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and see you in the libraries very soon. Thank you much.
Is there any further community announcements at this time? Okay, well, before we move on to public announce, comments, I'm going to have Madam Clerk read our policies and procedures for the public comment section of our meeting.
Okay, public comments. The procedure for addressing the council during the comment section of public comment shall be as follows. Any member of the public who wants to address the council shall begin doing so by stating his or her name, the street he or she lives on, and the municipality in which he or she resides. He or she shall have up to three minutes to address the council unless the council, any member of the council, a city elected or appointed official, or a city employee or contractor uses part of his or her allotted time by asking a question or questions or making a comment or comments.
Okay, so thank you. Also, to add on to that, since we do have Zoom now, I'd like to make it known that if you want to make a comment during public comment, I ask that you raise your hand on the Zoom application. I will then lower your hand and write down your name in the order it was received. At this point, it is not necessary to raise your hand again because we acknowledge you by lowering your hand. At this point, you will wait for your turn to be called on. We do ask you to turn on your video and limit it to three minutes. At this time, we have Charles Blackwell. Go ahead, please. State your name, street and city, and you have three minutes. He's disappeared. Okay. Okay, there. Oh, you know what? Let's unmute him. Can somebody get him unmuted? Sorry about that. Hold on.
I did ask him to unmute. I don't know.
Go ahead. You're unmuted, sir.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. My name is Charles Blackwell. I stay in Detroit, Michigan. I wanted to first state that I believe that the city should put out a request for a proposal for a city psychiatrist to seek a group rate and also to seek out anger management classes for you all. The second thing that I wanted to state is that some of you all have treated Gary Miyaki very badly. Gary has been working and doing work for the city unpaid. And how many of you all will work without getting paid? And Gary has been doing work for free, I guess, out of duty to serve the city that he stays in and love. And city council members have said, well, we want to see new names. But the city charter requires that that city corporation council be a resident of the city of Dearborn Heights. So I don't know how you expect to find some other marvelous greater candidate who is a resident of Dearborn Heights at a cheap rate that the city is seeking. So I think that you all should consider that as well. Thank you.
Next we have Mr. Blackburn. Can we unmute him, please?
All right. Okay, this is directed towards Councilman Abdullah. I want to say congratulations on being a future grandpa.
Thank you.
I don't know how to say that in Arabic. Hopefully. Okay, okay. And go Lions, and that is it.
Go Lions.
I'm sorry, Director Hashem had his hand waving and we don't see that on the front page if you don't use the actual hand on the Zoom, the raised part. So I'm going to call Director Hashem at this point. And I apologize, you were on the second page and I didn't see you until I went over there to look for someone else. There you go. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I'm having a problem with my video. Thank you for acknowledging me. It was a public comment. I just want to let the city council know that we're working closely with the mayor and the administration. We have secured another $310,000 from the CARES Act for our department, the CDBG. A public hearing will take place on December 3rd, 2020 at 6 o'clock. And thank you, Madam Chair, for acknowledging my email that I sent to every city council member. Also, Councilman Dave Abdullah did acknowledge my email as well. So if you have any questions about that, if you'd like to join a public hearing, it is listed on our public, public, under our department, under public hearing notice. Hope that all city council member, department heads, especially the police and the fire and the Director Hadad from Recreation will join us because they are on the budget, on the proposed budget, that is. Second of all, I want to thank, I want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving and a safe one. I hope everybody's safe. I know I'm staying home for Thanksgiving as well. I'm not having a party. I'm not having relatives over. And the last thing I want to talk about is the CARES Act that we have going at this, at this particular time. There was an article written in one of the papers that really bombarded us with lots and lots and lots of applicants. Please spread the word that we do have money, we are taking names and we are processing those applications as they come through. Even though with this COVID thing and us working, some of us working out of the house, but we are going to the office, we are trying to address these things. Please make sure you call us at 313-791-3500. And the last thing, Madam Chair, I want to thank Chris Klemchak, who's my coordinator, for helping me and helping the department and the city of Dearborn Heights acquire all of these grants that eventually helped the police, the fire and the seniors and the city as a whole. Thank you, everyone, and have a great night. Thank you.
Next we have Dana Parrish.
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members. I want to thank, I want to thank our council member for bringing up the item about the 25% pay raise. I asked about that last week and was told by the mayor that no such thing happened. And I'm glad that he did do a little more research into that and found that that is obviously the truth. That obviously has happened. Hope some more research could spun into that because I know that's happened. I'd like to ask Martin from Plant Moran. Are there any projections on revenue sharing as a result of the $3 trillion CARES package that went out? And the increase in deficits for the, for the federal budget for next year and the years coming? And how it's going to affect revenue sharing in the states and obviously into the cities? Have we projected that in our budget and budget shortfalls the coming years?
The latest projections that I've heard of, the state share revenue was actually supposed to go up slightly from last year. Not a huge percentage increase, but it was supposed to slightly increase next year. I would definitely encourage the city to keep monitoring that on the state shared revenue website. It is updated regularly, but based on the latest projections, it was supposed to go up. The caveat I would say to that, given the shutdowns recently, and I'm not sure what's going to happen with overall people shopping during the holiday season, et cetera. So I'm not sure if the state sales tax are, you know, going to really support the projections. So I would definitely recommend the city to keep monitoring that on the website. As a side note, I did want to mention too, and I don't know if you saw me waving or not, the audit technically does need to be approved by the council. It was not approved at the council meeting. If it's too late to do that tonight, it does need to be approved during this fiscal year or during this calendar year, still, still in December.
Okay, I want, I wanted to, Madam Chair, I wanted to also tag on to item 9K regarding the July 2019 foreclosures, I believe. And a lot of discussion was set around those, those, those homes. This, this doesn't directly reflect that. However, I can say, I, I again agree with Councilman Muscat in this. And that is that I understand his concern about, you know, the residents being upset about those homes not being taken care of and sitting here for, you know, a year and a half unattended to. Councilman Muscat and other, other council members, you got to understand how myself and my neighbors feel about this house of 5666 Grinler Park. Been sitting here for almost two decades. And a wreck, and the city's owned it for, well, depending upon who you ask, because you get different questions, but since 2015, the city's owned it. The residence, 2016, 2017, depending upon who you ask. And the city owns it and it's still sitting there and the garage is falling down, parts of the house is falling down. So I, I, I support you, Councilman Muscat and other, other council members. But we've got our own rats down here, literally, absolutely literally. Thank you very much and good job. Former Treasurer Zuhair and everyone have a safe and happy holiday season. Stay. uh, uh, holiday season. Stay, uh, stay healthy. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Nancy Brier. Please unmute yourself.
I think I'm unmuted. Is that correct?
You are.
Nancy Brier, Colgate Street, Dearborn Heights. I'll make it kind of shorten, and, uh, we'll get it done. Uh, I wish to thank Brian and Kim from Parks and Recreation for thinking and working on behalf of our seniors. I know that Kim's been working on bus programs and everything else, and Brian's just come across with a lot of neat things, and I, I really appreciate all the efforts you from City Hall, the council, are, are doing on behalf of our seniors. And one other little thing, we did try Zoom trivia yesterday, and there weren't many of us, but it was a lot of fun. So I recommend that everybody try to participate in that. Thank you.
You. Next, we have Zuhair Abdelhok.
Good evening again. Three five four Rosemary. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Uh, just, uh, to respond to Dana Parrish, I did FOIA the papers from CDBG, the salary increase of twenty-five percent of one of the employees. I do have the letter from Mr. Joe Hashem, and I do have the letter from the mayor to the Controller asking her to raise his, his salary twenty-five percent, basically five dollars an hour. And out of respect to the gentleman who is, I consider a friend of our family, I did not publish him on the internet. So I don't want to show, but the mayor knows what I'm talking about. So basically, he did violate the charter. He went behind your backs. And if the City Council wishes to see those letters, I have him in my possession, and he can ask Chrissy that I FOIA'd those. The second thing, uh, the one percent administration fee, we collected last year one point two million dollars. The treasurer budget is five point four, five hundred forty-five thousand. The assessor is around two hundred and sixty thousand, so you're looking around eight hundred thousand. And by state law, this money is strictly to be used to collect the taxes, process it, and if there is any litigation, they spend out of it. In my estimate, I went around seven years back to find out that it's always been one percent. We collected close to seven million dollars. We spent around five million dollars. I would like the mayor to tell me and John and the Controller, what happened to the two million dollars? Do we have another C S O project here or what? And thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from the audience? Oh, I, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do have here. Um, Councilman Muscat?
Uh, I just want to say, uh, to Mr. Parrish, uh, I, I did have the same concerns about those properties as Councilman Abdullah, but he was the one that raised them all, and, uh, it wasn't me. It was Councilman Dave Abdullah, and I thank him for it.
Next, we have Vince.
Hi, Vince Strapkowski, Columbia Street, Wayne County, Michigan, Dearborn Heights. My question is regarding the golf course. Um, is there any dollar figure on what the golf course generated this year, and where is that money going to go? Did you hear me?
Heard you perfectly, but nobody's responding. And the mayor's got his phone muted.
Okay. So I'm wondering if any of that money could go towards the, uh, the Police Department or Recreation Department to bring on another program.
Chris, um, Mrs. Lazlow. Hold on, let me unmute her. She had her hand up, so.
Okay, I'm gonna talk really, really quick and really, really quietly. On, uh, they, um, there is a, um, concessionaire's agreement that we get a certain amount from the golf course. We can get paperwork to council, um, but it's not a, um, it's not a percentage. It's up to a certain amount. That money then is, um, spent on certain repairs, and then it goes into other funds. We can get that, and I think council should have a study session, um, to show what they brought in, because they do have to provide that to us. I don't think we've got that yet. But it is a certain amount we get. We don't get a percentage. Hopefully, that answers your question.
We get a percentage or we do not get a percentage?
We get a certain amount.
Okay, and nobody knows what that amount is?
No, I do, we have an amount. I don't know offhand. We do have an amount that we're supposed to get. With COVID, we did waive that monthly fee, I think, a couple of months in on May and June, and that, and that amount can be given to you. We don't have a current, we have, our current Controller wouldn't know that, because he just started, but we can get that amount. I can go into the B S and A tomorrow, and we can get what we have today. The breakdown from the golf course is something that they provide us at the year end.
Okay, that'd be nice to know at, uh, at the next meeting, if that be, uh, possible.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Everybody have a good holiday.
Next, we have, uh, Director Head Dad.
No, I was just gonna answer the same question, uh, Chrissy Lazlow answered. Thank you.
Do we have any further comments from the audience? At this time? Someone about to make the motion?
I moved to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilman Bazey. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.